Hi, this is Dan Sullivan, President of the Council of George's Organizations. As usual, this broadcast is made possible with support primarily from the Robert Schalkenbach Foundation, also from the Foundation for Economic Justice, the Henry George Institute, Common Ground USA, Earth Sharing Associates, and private donors. And I have with me Jack Wagner. Most Georgists know Jack Wagner from the 1989 public hearing, 1990 tax swap, which was where we shifted from wage tax to land value tax. That's the first time we've ever shifted from wage tax to land value tax. There had been other shifts from building tax to land value tax. And I worked with Jack. I worked with several people who supported land value tax in Pittsburgh and other cities. And two of them have been outstanding. One was Bill Coyne and the other was Jack Wagner. And they are very similar in some ways and different in other ways. Bill Coyne came from a political family. His uncle had been a Republican state legislator. He's related to the Barretts, which are the political Irish family of Pittsburgh. Most, there's nobody named Barrett who has held public office, but there are lots of people who are related in one way or another to the Barretts who have held public office. And Mayor Richard Callagery, I understand, was married to a Barrett. So even some of our non-Irish politicians are tied to that. But Jack, on the other hand, your family was not in politics, was it?
My mom was slightly involved. And my brother, my brother Pete became a district magistrate. So that was really my taste of getting involved in the election process. And when I saw how competitive it was, I kind of enjoyed it. But I seriously never really thought about getting, becoming an elected official. It was more reactionary for me. And as I look back at it, I think that was the better way to become involved in government.
Yeah, you were a safety engineer, is that?
After, after high school, I joined the Marine Corps, served in Vietnam, was wounded in Vietnam, came back, went to college. At the age of 23, finally realized the importance of an education. Got a bachelor's science degree in safety management and became a certified safety professional. And worked for a major insurance company, CNA, out of Chicago as a safety engineer, mostly working with large clients, steel mills, foundries, that we insured for workers' compensation to help reduce their accidents and therefore help reduce our losses. So, but I did that for about eight years and was living in Chicago, climbing the corporate ladder. And I simply ran into a person above me that he and I, just our philosophy was far different. And I felt it was time for me to move on and I resigned and came back to Pittsburgh. Got involved in a family restaurant. And when I say reactionary, getting into government, there was a water shut off in the community in which I lived then and still live today, the Beachview neighborhood, which is, the water supply comes from now Pennsylvania American Water. Back then, it was Western Pennsylvania Water. There was a strike in chloridine, a cancer-causing agent was injected into the water system. And if you ever want to have a problem in your community, there, when there's no water, and I mean zero water to use because there's a cancer-causing agent in it, that's the situation I was in with the restaurant. So I called a group meeting of the community in a, in a church hall that held 200 people and we had about 600 people. And I invited all of city council and the mayor, nine members of council and the mayor. The mayor sent his assistant and no council member showed up for the meeting. At a critical time for this community. And, and so we, we had the meeting, obviously irate people. I, I actually managed the meeting and let, determined who spoke and when they spoke. But we got very few answers because elected officials avoided it. So I left the meeting that night and I said to myself, I'm running for public office because I'm sure I can at least listen to others and show up at meetings. And ran for city council, lost the first time, stuck with it. My other brother, who's a salesman, came up with a very unique, a very, very unique phrase for council race, which was stop the circus. And stop the circus, thinking the circus with the animals. We were trying to stop the circus in city council. And we just put signs all over the city saying, stop the circus. And just so happens, the circus was coming to town. A couple of weeks after we put the signs up and, and they became irate that someone was saying, stop their circus. And they held a news conference in city hall. And I showed up at the news conference and said, we're not here to stop your circus.
Your circus, we're here to stop our circus.
Our circus, which is city council. So I got great notoriety as a result of it and it propelled me forward and I won that election. So that's how I became an elected official. It was reactionary, but reactionary in a good way because we were not getting the proper representation in local government.
Now, I remember a campaign that just said, who cares? I saw these billboards that said, who cares? And that's all, that's all it said. And so I'm, I'm driving into town, it's like, what the heck is that? And as I remember it, it said, who cares for a while? And then when that started to get stale, it said, who cares about 88 neighborhoods?
Right. Very good, Dan, you remember.
Yeah, and, and I still, it was like, I had no idea, it was a total mystery as to what that billboard was about, but everybody was paying attention to it.
Well, well, my oldest brother, who was a sales manager, was brilliant at doing those kinds of things. And, you know, we, what we did was, we kind of baited the public with these messages and answered them three or four weeks later and, and it worked extremely well. And we had a lot of fun doing it. And that's really important in, in politics and in government also.
Was that the same election or was that?
That was the, what I ran for reelection four years later.
Okay. So I just thought that was, it was a particularly clever approach to things. And at the time, at the time council was elected at large, there were no council districts. So, so the fact that none of the council members showed up, if there had been one from your district, you would have expected that one to show up and none of the others, I suppose. But if they're all supposed to represent you, you would expect a couple of them to show up.
Oh, absolutely. When you, you have a water crisis, when you have a water crisis or an air crisis, you have serious problems that must be addressed immediately. And that's what this community had. And, I mean, you could not bathe with the water. And, and what happened was the community ended up having multiple buffaloes of water placed throughout it, but that lasted for two weeks. And two weeks was an extremely long time not to have, have running water.
So you were the Aaron Brockovich of Beachview?
Well, for, for a short period of time. And, and the problem was addressed. It was flushed out, new pipes were put in in certain areas, the strike was settled. And so things got back to normal.
Okay, and then.
But the circus in council continued. And, and, you know, so it was a challenge for me to go on council at a very, at a time when people were arguing and fighting and, and swearing at each other and doing all kinds of crazy things while the council meetings were being televised. And I think really the public lost its confidence for a while there in terms of local government. And, and ironically, look at, look at government today. You know, some could say certain aspects of government are, are a circus. And so some of those phrases could be used and reused again.
That, yeah, I guess that was kind of Tulsi Gabbard's message in the Democratic primary, but she didn't have the stop the circus routine, slogan. So anyhow, yeah, I think my interest, because I found it fascinating, the way you approach governing. And, and I think most of the listeners want to know what your thoughts are on land value tax, which is, you know, that's our issue and, and you were a big supporter of it.
Yeah, I was a big supporter of it, but quite honestly, when I entered government, I knew very little about it. And I compliment you and others who were advocates of it because you approached the subject in a very rational, common sense way. And when I say that, what, what you did for me was you educated me on the topic. And that was very important to me because for all the listeners on here tonight, keep in mind, there are a multitude of issues that every elected official faces. And it, it is impossible to know everything about all the issues you deal with. Consequently, you look at people whom you trust for advice and counsel to educate you particularly on the important issues of government. And Dan, to your credit and others who were advocates, did that for me. And it just so happened also that the time for the tax swap, so to speak, and the issue, the time of the eighties, when the steel mills were declining and the manufacturing process in our region and more and more land became vacant and there were more and more spectator or speculators of, of land. It was the right time for putting more emphasis on land tax because too much land was sitting idle and there were too many speculators related to it. So the, the timing of some issues is always critical in government. And I thought that issue, the timing couldn't have been better.
Yeah, and as I remember, we were going to do it the year before. And Sophie Maslov, the, the pressing issue was that young people were leaving and they were leaving, I think like 4% of the people between 20 and 30, I think 4% of them were leaving the city every year. And that's a 4% net, like it might've been 6% out and 2% in. But we were losing 4% of the people 20 to 30 every year. And one of the reasons was that we had a very high wage tax. And as I remember, we were going to make, propose this shift a year earlier and Sophie Maslov cut the wage tax, just found money in the budget that she said we could cut the wage tax and we cut it that year. And then the next year, we came back with the tax shift. And Sophie proposed going from wage tax to property tax. And then you had the counter proposal of going from wage tax to land tax.
Right. And keep in mind for, for the listeners on this evening, and we appreciate all of you being there, Pittsburgh went from a city of about 620,000 people back to the 1980, that was back in the turn of the century. And in the 1980s, it was about 300,000. Consequently, you, I mean, we had a problem and the problem was losing people. And so we had to address that, that issue structurally. And part of it was the tax system, correcting the tax system. And, and even though the city hasn't grown since then, it has stabilized and is doing much better today than obviously back 30 years ago. And that's one of the reasons, that's one of the core reasons. The tax structure was, was readjusted. And as a result of those readjustments, people then had incentives to, to maximize the value of those parcels by doing, by doing good development, basically.
And, and the other thing that, that I didn't realize until just as I was prepping for this meeting, I had always been impressed with how you handled the public hearing. And what I just realized was that you had only become council president a few days before that. You were made acting council president because Ben Woods had resigned with a scandal that still bothers me because the guy who turned state's evidence had done much worse than Ben had done. Ben had, the guy basically gave Ben Woods, he was the head of the housing authority and had given Ben Woods some free stuff that belonged to the housing authority. And, and because Ben Woods was the elected official, Ben took the, the rap and the other guy had, basically got off. And I always said, I use that as a lesson to people, if you're an elected official, like keep absolutely clean because, because people under you will give you things just so they can turn you in, you know? It's that, that kind of thing, that they will compromise you and then, and then it's not, whatever you get, it's not worth it. And, because I thought Ben Woods, I thought Ben Woods conducted himself admirably on council.
Yeah, he was a good council president, actually.
And, you know, I had gone to him, he shifted from building tax to land tax a couple of years before that, I think around 84. And he, I went to him and said, look, we have all the Democratic Committee people, most of them save money with this, we can send out a mailing saying we support it. And he said, I never announced that I support anything until the public hearing is over. Because if you announce that you've, you've made your decision, then you're telling the people who, at the public hearing, that you're not interested in what they have to say. So I thought that was a, a kind of a classy thing to say.
A lot of common sense in that statement.
Yeah, it's, he, you know, he's, he's, he does not, he does not come, he might say, I'm, I'm interested in it, but he does not say, this is what I'm going to do until, until the public hearings have run their course. And he's given everybody a chance to speak. And I, I thought that was a nice thing. But I was impressed with, the conduct of the meeting was, the crowd was rancorous, some of the council members were rancorous, the, the circus had not been completely stopped. And Michelle Madoff was, wanted to, wanted to call off the public hearing in the middle of the hearing, which you can't do, but it always struck me as odd because I thought, I always thought she was the most intelligent member of council and yet the least effective. And it, so I, it kind of made me humble myself because it's like, I always thought I was pretty smart and, and being smart really doesn't, isn't the end all and be all that smart people think it is.
But, but that, that hearing was a real educational kind of hearing. So back to Ben Woods's statement, listen to the public. That's vitally important because you had a mixture of people, not just attending, but speaking, starting off with the mayor, if I recall correctly. And you always have to give the mayor their, their right due in terms of speaking their opinion and why she wanted to move from wage tax to property tax in general. And, but the, the hearing was, was an educational hearing. And again, Dan, if it wasn't for the persistence that you brought to the table on this issue, which really took years for people to become more knowledgeable about and to really see what was happening in Pittsburgh and connect the two, all this would not have happened. So, and it's really taught, you're really talking about the foundation, so to speak, of the community when you're talking about the tax structure.
Yeah, and, and educating even the people who paid more, I think, if they didn't support it, they, a lot of them respected it. There was a guy who owned the Design Center and I rented space there, Ward Olander, he was, he was a, I thought he was a great guy. He, he was very active in the vintage Grand Prix that Pittsburgh holds. And I talked, I talked to him once and I said, well, you might not like what I do. And I, he says, well, what do you, I do, you know, I promote land value tax. And he says, oh, that's the best thing Pittsburgh ever did. And I said, well, I looked up, I looked up your property and you pay more under land value tax. And, because you, he said, some pay more, some pay less. I said, yeah, but you got vacant lots in the strip district. And he said, yeah, but I got those vacant lots really cheap because the guy before me didn't want to pay the land tax. So he understood it and, and he paid more with it. And it didn't seem to bother him much that he paid more with it. So, so I was always surprised at how much, how, how if you get into an us versus them mentality, you close the door to a lot of people who might agree with you. You know, that there, there are a lot of people who, Mary Caroline Hunt testified and she pays a lot more with land value tax. And she has like a half acre in Shady Side. So she paid a lot more with land value tax and, and a lot of people did. So that was.
So let me ask you a question. What happened 30 years ago, three decades ago, has that had an impact on other cities and, and them taking a closer look at how they tax and particularly property tax and the importance of land tax versus the building tax? Has, has there been a multiplier effect here across the country to move in that direction?
Well, there has been somewhat in Pennsylvania, but they were all smaller cities. So, you know, Clerton, Duquesne and McKeesport all have land value tax.
Okay.
And Duquesne backpedaled on it and they're in the worst shape. And McKeesport kind of stayed with it and Clerton moved, Clerton has almost no building tax at all. And their school district has done it as well. And the only reason they're allowed to is their school district is coterminous with, with the city. So Pittsburgh's school district can't do it because Mount Oliver is in the Pittsburgh school district. And a little bit of, a little bit of Pittsburgh is in the Baldwin School District and over in Hayes, I think. So, or, or what's the name of that neighborhood? Lincoln Heights? I forget exactly where, but there's a little piece, Lincoln, there's a little piece of Pittsburgh that actually goes to Baldwin's schools.
Okay.
But, yeah, so we're not, Pittsburgh's school district is not allowed to do it yet. And if we got a state legislative approach, that would be, that would be good. One of the things I wanted to ask you is, you know, for, for the participants, for the attendees, what kind of, what, how, how would you, when you're looking at, at politicians to approach with this, how would you prioritize who to, who to approach first and, and how to approach them? And, because we tend to be, we tend to be ideological and a lot of us are, are left-wing Georgists and a lot of us are right-wing Georgists and they tend to think in those terms.
Well, I, I would suggest you be common sense Georgists. And when I, when I say that, and it's actually one of the problems in our country is the extremes rather than being in the middle. And I still believe that the majority of Americans are in the middle.
Whoops.
Well, the majority of Americans, and the majority of Americans want to make rational decisions. And so how would you approach elected officials? You do it one-on-one in an educational way where you can provide the kind of data that they will understand simply by tying that financial information to information related to what is happening in real life in, in the community, whether it be the borough, the city, whatever. And that's, I mean, just open up your eyes to Pittsburgh in the early 1980s. We had steel mills shutting down, we had massive pieces of land being acquired by different developers. Those developers simply sitting on the land. We had people who thought that if they, if they enhanced their property, taxes would go up. We had a 4% wage tax, half of that was a school district. When surrounding municipalities had at least one half or one fourth of that wage tax. So discussing all those issues in a common sense way, generally first and foremost with those who are assistants to elected officials. You always have a chief of staff, even as a councilperson I did. And talking the issue through with that person helps convince the elected official of the appropriate direction to move in. And, and to be persistent about it. And, and you, you can never give up on an issue that you know is a real issue. And the people conveying the issue have to be genuine, straightforward people. You're not representing a party, a Republican or a Democrat, you're representing the issue. And, and the issue here is what's in the best interest of all the people of the community. And, and you've got to get those political barriers out of the way, no matter what the issue is, and certainly one like this that is a little bit more complicated.
So, and one of the things that fascinated me, I heard you speak at a veterans group about, about your, your approach to, to making decisions in the stressful situation. And I don't remember the particulars of it too much, but it was a cycle and there was a cycle that, that they taught in the military that, that commanders do more thoughtfully and rationally and that the, you said the fastest people or the fighter pilots do this several times a second, they go through this cycle. And I'm trying, the cycle was something like assess the situation, decide what you're going to do and act and then reassess the situation.
And then, yeah, you remembered it well, you remember it better than I do, actually. Keep in mind, I wasn't in the Air Force, I was, I was a grunt in the Marine Corps. And grunts in the Marine Corps have to do that in a different way. But it's really taking in information as much as is available at the moment. Whatever that moment may be, it may be a split second or it may be. Whatever that moment may be, it may be a split second or it may be three weeks or two months leading up to a vote on an issue. But taking in as much information as, as you can and listening to a variety of sources, pro and con. I would always, when a lobbyist approached me when I was a state senator, I, I would always ask the lobbyist who was advocating for on a certain side of an issue. I would, I would say to that lobbyist, tell me why I shouldn't vote for this. And in asking that question, I was asking the question, yes, to come up with a little bit more information, why I shouldn't support what they're advocating, but also asking the question to see if they were being honest with me. Because I generally knew the answer to that question. But I wanted to really see if this person was genuine. And if the person conveying the message is not genuine, the message probably isn't genuine. So that I think is an important aspect of, of this issue, the land tax issue. You and the advocates of it were always genuine and you were factually based. So when tough questions were asked you, you, you had the appropriate answers.
Thank you. Yeah, what, one of the things that struck me about that cycle of, of a praise, you know, assess the situation, decide what you're going to do and act, and then reassess the situation was that none of the decisions are final. That at any time, new information could, you know, it's like, even if you were committed to what I want, the idea that if new information came in and you found out that what we were telling you was wrong, or that there was some really important thing that we hadn't considered, that that would just, you know, that would cause a reassessment and a, and a redecision. And, and that seems appropriate to me. That I'm always frustrated with people who, once they've, once they've made a decision, their ego is invested in, in being right. And not, and not considering the possibility of being wrong.
And we're not always right. I mean, elected officials sometimes claim they are, but we've, we make bad votes. And generally speaking, it's because you have either let your ego get in the way on an issue or you haven't taken in sufficient information to better understand the issue. And, and so it's a reason why you, I mean, when I was elected official, I always said, I had, when I was in console, I had 300,000 bosses, which meant that 300,000 people in Pittsburgh could give me their opinion. And, and I would listen to their opinion. I was elected to represent them. So their opinion should, I should be open-minded to that opinion. Some, some issues are, can be very complex and, and especially tax issues are complex. So you really have to be open-minded to take in as much data as possible.
So then you went on to be a state senator and a, and the auditor general of the, of the state. And I didn't follow that a whole lot. We, we had a land tax option bill in, but I don't think we were pushing it much. We figured we had all we could do to get the Pennsylvania cities to do it. And one person got to Pennsylvania boroughs to do it. But I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure if that's when you were a state senator or not. But
I'm not sure.
And then as auditor general, you basically audited state government. So every county has controllers that audit county government. And land tax was undone because the county hired a private company to reassess and they horribly botched the land assessments. They botched the assessments overall, but they, they botched the land assessments even more. And but unfortunately you weren't around it, that you were, you know, you were focused on state issues and it was not your, you know, it was not the, it's, it's not the job of state, of the auditor general to meddle into county malfeasance. It's the job of the, of the county controllers to do that. So it struck me that, that that we couldn't really turn to you for help with that because it wouldn't be appropriate.
What, what, what kind of you referring to Allegheny?
Allegheny, back on, back when they hired Sabre Systems to completely reassess. And they assessed, they assessed the land under my house at nine times the value of the vacant lot next door. Because my house, they said, because you have a house on that land and the zoning does not allow them to put a house on the vacant lot next door. And I said, well, there was a vacant, there was a house on the vacant lot next door when that zoning law was passed. And then when they tore down the house, they lost the zoning. So the, you know, that the, all the houses that were grandfathered in with a variance and that house had a variance, that vacant lot had a variance too. So the variance is goes, is part of the building. The cost, part of the variant, the cost of getting a variance is part of the cost of getting a building. But they did that all over so that there was just zero uniformity in land values on even, you know, if, if one house on Walnut, or one commercial building on Walnut Street had a nicer building, it had a higher land value. They both had buildings, but one had a higher, and it was just, it defeated the whole, the whole point of land value tax. And, and all of the council members, except one, said that if they got the assessment straightened out, they'd go back to land value tax. But that's when we lost it. And then what, now we're having our first housing bubble in over a hundred years. Because, because land speculation is profitable in Pittsburgh again. So so anyhow, you're out of politics or out of electoral politics, I guess. And you're now working with veteran, you're, you founded Jobs for Veterans? And you told, you're also active, I don't know if you also founded this or you're just active in it, which is, I guess you call it Dogs for Veterans, but it, there's a better, a better
Guardian Angels Medical Service Dogs.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's what you're referring to. The, the veteran issues are very close to my heart. I was very fortunate to survive Vietnam. And I've always remembered the, the, the buddies that I served with that were not as fortunate. And so consequently I've taken the time that I have, particularly since I retired from, from government about seven years ago, to start a nonprofit organization called Pittsburgh Hires Veterans. After you address the physical and cognitive issues of someone who has served their country in war, the most important thing you can do is help them find, gain full employment. A, a job helps solve a lot of problems. That's actually what we're going through right now as a country with the shutdown is people not working and many jobs, especially for those who have less, are less available right now. So that's, that's a serious problem. The same is held true for veterans. Veterans unemployment rate has traditionally been higher than the general population. So we started a nonprofit myself and another seven or eight veterans and people with great concern and passion and understand the value of, of veterans and people who served our country. We started a nonprofit and we, we helped, last year we helped 104 people find quality jobs in the Pittsburgh region. So at no cost to them, no cost to the employers. That's the one nonprofit that I'm very involved in. And incidentally, right now we're running a, a blood drive. And as part of the blood drive for the next two weeks, you will have your blood tested for COVID-19 and whether or not you have the antibody to the coronavirus. So we've kind of branched off in a couple areas related to serious issues of the day. And that's what the blood drive is all about in terms of Pittsburgh hires veterans. The other nonprofit has been around for 10 years. It's located in Florida. For anyone that's on, on this event tonight, the name is Guardian Angels Medical Service Dogs. They're also a, a national nonprofit. They provide highly trained and sophisticated medical service dogs, mostly to veterans, but also to the general population, first responders, at no cost to the recipient. But under contractual arrangement that they, they properly treat the dog, proper, proper medical care, proper food. And that dog can be trained to address traumatic brain injury issues, post-traumatic stress, seizures, nightmares, glucose imbalance, a multitude of issues. To give you an example, a young man in Kentucky was shot about three years ago in the head and had five brain surgeries. Had great difficulty talking, communicating, walking. He got a Guardian Angels Medical Service Dog. The young man is, it's like night and day who he is today, going back to school. Two young ladies at the Parkland School District in Florida who witnessed their friends being killed during that Valentine's Day massacre would not go back to school. They got dogs from Guardian Angels Medical Service Dogs. They're back in school and normal again. A highly trained medical service dog is a miracle worker with the recipient that has them, not just the recipient, but also the family. So I work with them to promote Guardian Angels here in the Pittsburgh region. They thank so much of the Pittsburgh region that we bought 102 acres near, not far from Pittsburgh International Airport. And their first campus to raise and train the dogs outside of Florida will be right here in the Pittsburgh region. So we will double the capacity of raising and training medical service dogs. And therefore more people who have serious issues will have medical service dogs. Hopefully a year and a half, a year, a year and a half from now when the, the campus is built and up and operating. So two very good nonprofit organizations, both of which mostly help veterans, but also families of veterans and individuals in the community.
Okay. Yeah, it, it struck me that both of these had more to do with emotional wellbeing. That the Jobs for Veterans is not so much about the paycheck, is about giving people meaningful, purposeful lives.
That you're exactly right, Dan. Yep. Yeah, it, it, let's face it. When we're idle, we're not productive. And, and the most, what, what, someone who puts their life on the line for our country, in my honest opinion, I think the most important thing we can do for them is find gainful employment. And a lot of the issues that they have will go away. And look at what's happened during this pandemic. You know, people are on edge now. Why? Because they're all at home, they're all, they're not communicating with each other the way we normally do. So employment is, is vitally important to, I think, anyone who's capable of working.
So the, so the riots might be tied very much to the lockdown. Keeping people pent up exacerbates whatever natural bad inclinations they have, they're more likely to find voice when they're, when they're cooped up for two months and not, not interacting with the world in a constructive way. I have some questions here. And two from me honestly, would you have followed the land, the, the land value taxation, single tax prescription, which I guess single tax prescription is just land value tax carried to its ultimate. So it's, single tax prescription is to abolish all the other taxes and put, or all the other city taxes, if you're a city councilman and put them all on land value. I don't know that there was a, an option for that.
And well, there's, there's reasons for the different taxes and some could be argued should not even exist. But that would really require a thorough analysis. I, I mean, if you don't, don't own land, does that mean you're not going to pay taxes? You know, that kind of thing. So there's, there's a zillion arguments out there as to which taxes are better taxes. And it generally relates to, to what degree a person does not want to be taxed. And unfortunately so. Taxes are a reality. Balancing them appropriately, I think is what's important.
And he, his, his approach was to say tax rent collectors. I don't know if that, rather than, than argue against vacant land. He wants to know which would gain more traction.
Taxing renters?
Taxing rent collectors.
Rent collectors.
Yeah.
Are, are the owners of the property.
Yeah.
Or those managing the property.
Yeah. I mean, that would confuse me because the people who are holding the city back are the ones who are not collecting rent because they haven't done anything with the land. I mean, the people who are collecting rent have at least provided either housing or office space for somebody. Somebody saying that commit only until the end of the public hearing. Or I, or I guess don't commit until the public hearing. That's the only democratic commitment any public servant should adhere to, somebody said. Somebody wants us to write the LVT story. It's very instructive. How much time you got for writing, Jack?
What are we writing about?
The, the land value tax story. It's on my website. If you go to savingcommunities.org docs. Percy Williams wrote it up till the 1940s and then I took that and modernized it, but I haven't written anything since the assessment debacle.
Well, it is a great story. I mean, Pittsburgh and the impact that all of you had on changing the tax structure. The, the results are somewhat obvious when you look at Pittsburgh today versus 30 years ago, versus 50 years ago, versus 60 years ago. You know, it's a, it's a modern city. It still has its, its issues, there's no doubt. We'd like the air to be a little cleaner. You always want the water to be as clean as possible. But we've come a long way and have really, I think, been leaders in America in some of those areas.
So somebody said people are finding their water bills prohibitive. So, somebody said people are finding their water bills prohibitive. I don't know that we have a solution to that, although I have trouble with privatizing water. Um, you know, your problems were with a, a licensed private monopoly. And I have a private, I have that same water system source for here in McKeyport. A lot of small municipalities can't have their own water, but they can form councils of government and jointly do it. Um, but I've always thought that something should either be entirely private or entirely public. And so, you know, I think this, the sports stadium should be entirely private and the, the water system should be entirely public. I don't know if you've ever dealt with that. I mean, there are practical questions with that. So I'm, I'm speaking ideologically here.
But well, uh, your, your points are um, make sense. Uh, however, what's even more important, and I found this out being the Audit of General Pennsylvania, where I had to uh, keep checks and balances on $30 billion a year. Uh, is making sure that the organizations that are saying who are uh, earmarked to do certain things, do just that. Um, for instance, the city of Pittsburgh, um, the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority, back about 10, 12 years ago, uh, gave the city uh, $300 million. Uh, where did they get that money? They, they borrowed the money and uh, will pay it off probably over 20 years. Um, so the debt of that water uh, authority increased dramatically. Uh, these kinds of things happen and there's very little attention given to them. You could take, for instance, the Pennsylvania Turnpike. Uh, the Pennsylvania Turnpike each, each and every year uh, borrows uh, 400 to 500 million dollars and gives it to PennDOT. That should not happen. Um, PennDOT uh, should uh, be able to work within its own budget uh, rather than having another agency borrow money and give them money based on legislation that was passed. And incidentally, the Pittsburgh uh, situation where the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority gave the city $300 million was a legislative initiative, obviously with, with the advice and counsel of the executive branch of government. And point I'm making is that entities that are created and there are literally thousands of authorities uh, in, in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Uh, and there are about the same number of municipalities in, in, in Pennsylvania should be only able to deal with the issues that they were created for and to uh, oversee. And, and unfortunately, that's not always the case. And the media does a horrible job uh, not reporting on those kinds of issues. Uh, and when in fact, some of these authorities uh, almost go under because they are loaning money to the very government that created them. And it's, it's uh, it's, it's, it's if we had better watchdogs of how the, the monies are spent uh, and where they're coming from, we would be far better off.
Okay, um, yeah, and the, uh, authorities, even, even if there's like Pittsburgh authorities are actually creatures of the state. So are, the auditor general looks at, has supervision over the authorities?
Only if the state is providing them revenue. And gen- generally speaking, they are, the state is not. So the state has no authority to audit, for instance, the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority.
So they're very much loose cannons because I remember the Home Rule Charter, they were going to try to get rid of authorities and the the legal opinions were that they couldn't do that because the authorities were created by the state rather than by the city. But, but yet the state doesn't really supervise them that the city, because the city appoints all the people who are on it. So they're, they're kind of a weird they're in that never, never land between public and private and between state and local.
And, and generally speaking, there is not the, um, the oversight with authorities as there is for local government.
Rick Ryback asked, uh, do you think that property tax reform makes sense for Philadelphia? Uh, if so, what are the necessary steps to make this happen? I, I'm sure he means land value tax.
I, I don't know enough about the Philadelphia tax structure. Uh, I do know they have a high wage tax. Uh, but I, I don't know, um, the various taxes and to what degree they're taxed.
My understanding is that they don't have a lot of vacant land, but they have a lot of vacant buildings, which is worse in some ways. Warren, who does the, Warren Chamberlain wants to know, who does the assess, assessments in Pennsylvania? The county or the individual cities and towns? My understanding is it's the counties, period.
Yeah, mine also.
Are there statewide rules or standards to govern local or county assessors and their methods? I, I think
I, I'm, I'm not sure about what the correct answer is to that. So I, I pass on it, Dan, it's yours.
Um, I'm, I'm sure there are some. I know we have the State Board of Equalization, which has no, no teeth and no power. The counties provide them with information and they uh, the purpose of the statewide, the State Board of Equalization is that the uh, school funding is based on, on a formula that includes what's called tax effort, that if you're making a sincere effort to raise the money locally, that that helps your case for getting more, more state sales tax money. But uh, I was told by the guy who was in charge of it, that it was like, it was that, that they had no auditing power over the county assessors, so that what the county told them was like a game of liar's poker that you, um, you basically told the state equalization board, whatever you thought you could get away with telling them and they pretty much had to accept your answer. With all your experience and, and with uh, both government and nonprofit, who do you think operates philanthropy more efficiently and effectively, communities or governments?
Philanthropy, wow.
Well, governments don't get much philanthropy. I guess they get some.
It doesn't. Uh, if it does, it's in a very structured way. Uh, you know, related to uh, a disaster that may have occurred to help address it. Uh, and, and recently, some of that has been happening and rightfully so, uh, to help government.
Um, somebody asked, did, did taxing land at a higher rate than buildings have a role in downtown redevelopment?
Well, it, it had a role in, in all redevelopment. Uh, and keep in mind, uh, Pittsburgh, uh, even though it's downtown, is a condensed area, generally thought between, between the two rivers at, in the point, it really has expanded uh, the downtown uh, uh, across the river. So yes, I believe it's had an impact because uh, keep in mind, there were a lot of railroad tracks, there were a lot of factories, there were a lot of unused parcels. The riverfront in Pittsburgh was a disaster 40 years ago. Uh, much has been done to dramatically improve the river fronts here in Pittsburgh. It's now uh, actually one of the uh, prime pieces, the, it, of real estate and the beauties of Pittsburgh, which makes Pittsburgh so, so I think uh, uh, exceptional to look at, especially a view from Mount Washington. Uh, so um, yeah, it's had an impact downtown and the near downtown.
Ed Dodson wants to note, does Pittsburgh have strong recycling regulations? And is this regional for the MSA or applies only to the city?
Well, well, the, the amazing aspect of recycling and uh, shame on me, I didn't take a close enough look at some of the legislation at the state level, uh, when I was Auditor General and as Senator. Uh, Pittsburgh has a good recycling program. And, and Pittsburgh really was one of, one of the forefronts and it was under uh, then Mayor Cal Gere. Uh, and I was on council then, but I, I always remember that began uh, in the late 1980s, uh, around 85, 86. Maybe the sa- same time that, uh, the land tax was, was in the forefront. Um, but not enough has happened with um, communities across Pennsylvania. And the whole recycling is based to some degree on the size of the community. When in fact, some communities do not even recycle. And all communities should be recycling. And um, why uh, uh, communities that are wealthier but have less of a population do not recycle is beyond my understanding.
The, um, let's see. Um, if, if LVT or the split rate tax does in fact increase the incentives for development and density, how do we deal with the NIMBYs? NIMBYs, not in my backyard, people. Did, did you, did you experience that? Did you experience people fighting against developments in their neighborhood?
No, I, I have not experienced that, to be frank about it.
Yeah, the only one, the only one I remember is like low income housing, subsidized low income housing. There was opposition to that. But uh, I don't know of anything else like that.
I don't either.
Well, we caught up pretty much to the questions. And um, and so I guess I, did you have any final thoughts on, on uh, on land value tax and governing that you wanted to share or?
Well, I, I would just, uh, Dan, I would more, more or less just summarize. Uh, Pittsburgh is a prime example of the hard work of all of you for decades of how putting a greater concentration on the land tax can have a positive short-term and long-term economic impact and quality of life impact. Uh, and um, the pursuit of greater emphasis on the land tax has worked. And um, it's a long, tough process and I'm sure many people on this call have gray hair, including uh, myself and yourself. Uh, um, al- along the way, but it paid off. And um, uh, the, the fruits are of the re- the, the result is the, is the fruit of the whole uh, project, so to speak. And uh, again, uh, I was a neophyte when it came to understanding some of this way back when. And still today, don't know as much as I'd like to know, but it is the uh, tenacity, the persistence, the dedication um, of all of you that have helped make that happen. And uh, so I would certainly encourage you to continue it and hope, hopefully, there is a younger generation uh, that will follow in your footsteps. And uh, continue to take some of these complex issues and explain them in a common sense way to elected officials so that they understand them and understand the value of making changes when they are appropriate. And again, I think uh, with what happened in Pittsburgh, um, with the, the changing of the economic climate, going from heavy manufacturing to meds and eds, uh, and a, a much more diverse economy, including um, including travel and tourism. Um, all of, all of what you, all of you did has had a positive impact in many of those areas. So uh, it's, it's been a long struggle, but a very positive and fruitful uh, accomplishments.
And I want to mention Steve Cord before I forget too, because Steve was very active in that, in, in promoting that. So
And, and, and I remember all the speakers at the public hearing. Um, they were um, all logical. Um, they were all passionate. Um, Mary Lou Daniel, uh, I remember her. What a great lady she was. Uh, and was such a good advocate of, of this issue. Uh, Randy Zotter, uh, you know, and I could go on and on. Uh, a number of people who um, were, were knowledgeable and uh, you knew they were genuine. And they, they were speaking from the heart when they were advocates of this issue.
So, okay, well, um, thank you very much. And uh, I, you know, to all veterans, I say thank you to your service, partly because I was uh, hiding in college from, from participating in that war.
That's okay. We don't hold anything against anyone. We, even those who protested the war, we were, we were fine with that. We, we uh, veterans have uh, big shoulders when it comes to those kinds of things.
Yeah, and I, I, I only had pro- I would, I protested the war. I, I only had a problem with the people who protested the soldiers themselves. It's like they didn't decide to go. Nobody's, nobody's more anti-war than a soldier. And um,
Well said.
Because they're the ones who die, you know, it's like, so um, you know, so I appreciate that and I think we should wrap it up. And uh, I want to thank you again. And I want to thank the um, where's my list of people? I know it's the Robert Schalkenbach Foundation. The, here it is. The Foundation for Economic Justice, the Henry George Institute, Common Ground Unit, uh, say Earth Sharing Associates and private donors like you out there. Thank you very much. And
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Adios.